Okay, we're on to the agenda. Do any of the commissioners have a change to the agenda?
No, we're good, I think.
Okay. I have potentially two. I have two potential changes to the agenda. We've received a notice from Alex Abeta that he would like to go, move from item 8G to item 8D. That would be the first move. And then, I have a quick question to the audience. Who's here on the agricultural issue? How many people here? Okay, quite a few of you. Then perhaps maybe we can move the agricultural discussion up to item E. And then move the, I guess, the first ordinance discussion down, so they would be switched. So G would become D. E would become, I guess E would stay at E, and then D would become F, and then F would become G. Does that make sense?
[laughing]
Let me see.
Okay.
Can somebody make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right. So, I think we're on to the...
Speak louder.
Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe I'm just not talking into the microphone, I apologize. Not used to having the speaking.
Justin, can you repeat the order of the items on the agenda that you...
Sure. Did you write those down?
Please.
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
D, let's see. G is becoming D. F becomes G.
G.
And D becomes F.
F.
Yeah, I got the circuit.
You're good?
We're good.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and move on to the approval of the meeting minutes from the November meeting. Does anybody have any changes, amendments, alterations, corrections to the meeting minutes from November?
I don't.
I have a couple. There are some changes I would like to see. Under the approval minutes, item C, where it indicates the motion was approved, well, Commissioner Luchs made a motion, the last part of that sentence I would like it to read as amended, because there was a change.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And then, just a typo I have in, on page four, middle of the page, after closing the public, it has, "There were no further questions," has "not" instead of "no."
Do you see that, Martha?
Yes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Perez, do you have any changes?
No changes.
Okay.
Move to approve with the changes.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
All is in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. We have next the citizens' forum. Has anybody signed up to speak on the citizens' forum? Okay, having seen none, let's go ahead and move on to our first case. We're moving on to case number PZ 2013-6. It's the matter of MRS Incorporated, property owner Hugh McQueen. Would Mr. McQueen like to speak on behalf of this project?
Other than what was said last week... Other than what was said last week, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to field them, or, not last week, last meeting, excuse me.
Yeah. Does the commission have any questions for Mr. McQueen?
No.
Well, Martha, would you like to say anything else on this application?
I just want to have the staff report be part of the record, and normally we ask the, the person testifying if they want, you know, to say their name...
Swearing.
And to swear that they tell the truth and nothing but the truth.
Yeah, I thought of that. He wasn't going to say anything, so...
[laughing] My name is Hugh McQueen. Go ahead.
Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. It's just a formality.
Sure.
Okay. I think it's all pretty straightforward. It was a lot split, .25 acres for a house, .562 for the commercial building, we were going to do a conditional use permit for the residents within the highway protection corridor, and that's what we're approving.
Right.
It all seems pretty straightforward to me.
I just have one question for staff. It does indicate we're approving the lot split and the conditional use, which, you know, it's fine, but typically would that be split into action items, or could it be one action item for both?
I put them together, because without the special use, we could not go through with the lot split.
Okay.
And the lot split could actually be administrative, other than this problem with the fact that the zoning requires a special use permit for the residential use as the primary use.
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions before we move to vote?
No. I need a motion.
I guess we need a motion.
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve case number PZ 2013-6, based on staff report and findings of facts.
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion is the second. Is there any discussion? Having heard none, I'll go ahead and go to vote.
Okay, Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Luchs?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
The motion passes, five to zero.
Thank you for your consideration.
Okay.
Moving along.
Yeah, flipping along, doing great.
All right, we're moving on to case number PZ 2013-18, Del Norte Properties, represented by Mark Yarovitz. Mr. Yarovitz, do you have anything else to say on behalf of the project?
State your name and do...
Mark Yarovitz.
Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I have no further information to submit, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that weren't answered at the previous meeting.
I have a question. This might be for Ms. Perkins. The way I understood the staff report is that we were just going to be approving a zone change, but it seemed to me that we might be approving a zone change and a conditional use permit. Are we, is that clear?
Yes. The commission last time discussed approving a special use permit for the existing uses on the property. I, as staff, am reluctant to do that, so I did not change my staff report, because I feel like that the rezoning should just be rezoning, without it being contract zoning, which we also discussed the last time. So, I think the uses were there before the zoning ordinance was adopted in 1974, therefore I think the uses can be grandfathered in as they are now. The commission may choose to disagree with me, that's my staff recommendation, but the, you know, the decision is the commission's.
Okay. So, we would end up with property that's nonconforming but legal? Is that what you're saying?
Right. That's exactly right.
Thank you.
Now, one of the other recommendations that the staff report had in it was that the applicant, before approving the zoning, it be conditioned upon a certificate of appropriateness.
They already got it.
Oh, it's in there?
Yes, there is two conditions. One was that there is a certificate of appropriateness that needed to be approved by the Historic Preservation Commission. They actually have done so. The second request in the staff report was that a site plan approval would be required, so the Planning and Zoning Commission would have to approve the site plan. And that's in an effort to separate the zoning from the actual project. Contract zoning is where you're actually zoning for a particular project, and unfortunately, this code, the way it's written, does endorse contract zoning. Normally, you want zoning to be separate from the use of the property that's planned for a particular project. So, that's the recommendations of the staff report, is to treat the zoning as a rezoning, not for any specific project, and then later getting approval for the actual project with a certificate of appropriateness, since it's in the historic overlay zone, and then getting the site plan approval as well.
And so, all that's left is the site plan approval, then?
That is correct, and I believe that Mark Yarovitz, as the agent, is going to submit that for your review for the next hearing, as a preliminary hearing.
Okay.
That would be a whole different case altogether.
Yes, that's completely separate from this case.
So, all we're really doing, then, is converting, through this vote, we would be converting to an R-14 zone.
Right.
That is correct.
With a conditional use.
It can be with a conditional use, or it can be without a conditional use, that is your decision. I have made my recommendation on that, but...
Commissioner Perez, what would be your desire to have it be on a conditional use?
Because of the grandfathering in, the businesses are allowed under the conditional use, and for, in an R-14, so I think that's the way we should approach it.
I think what Ms. Perkins is saying, correct me if I'm wrong, but since it's grandfathered in, there wouldn't need to be additional modifications to the conditional use to allow for some kind of business to be in that area.
Yeah, I think what Commissioner Perez is getting to, correct me if I'm wrong, is he wants it to be allowed with the special use, or with the conditional use permit, so that allows, that goes with the property, unless the use isn't, unless the property isn't used for that use for over six months, and then it's no longer an allowed use. But nevertheless, then it would be a conforming use versus a grandfathered use.
Right.
Yeah.
Because it's, those businesses are allowed in a conditional use...
Sure.
In an R-14.
Right.
So, if we approved...
Can I ask a question, because I'm thoroughly confused? If the current restaurant in that location changes to an office, do I have to come back for an approval?
No, because an office is...
Also a conditional use.
Is approved in the conditional use.
Okay, then I would agree with you, thank you.
Yes.
All right, well, do we have any more discussion from the commission before we, somebody makes a motion?
No, we need to open it to public.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Sorry, it's my, it's my first time chairing a meeting, so I apologize for this, if I make any slip-ups. Is there anybody in the public would like to talk on this project? Ma'am, would you like to come forward? Please state your name for the record.
I'm Ann McKenzie.
Ann, do you swear to tell the truth?
I do swear to tell the truth. Okay, I have three questions, concerns. I really, I'm really worried for the two old buildings up front, and I'm, I don't understand conditional use permit. What is it conditional on?
The conditional use permit would allow a business to operate conditionally within a residential zone, so when this, when this property is converted to an R-14 zone, the business that would be there, that's occupying that, would have a conditional use permit to, to work as a commercial, which would be commercial inside a residential zone.
Okay. So, it's just, it's just, the condition is just stated when the permit is given, is that?
Say that again.
The condition is then given, when the permit is given?
Yes.
The condition is stated at that point?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And then, goodness, my confusing notes here. Oh, yes. Goodness, I'm sorry. Here, I am also worried that the question of changing zoning for a particular project does seem to me, if this, if that is illegal, to change a zone for one project, I don't know how else you would define this. This is changing the zoning for one project, as far as I can see quite clearly, and that worries me.
Well, I think you have a concern that's understandable, however, I think if you look up and down the highway corridor in that area, there is a continued mixed use of properties, whether it's commercial in some places, zoned, and residential in others. What Ms. Perkins and the planning department were, were doing, and were attempting to do, is to continue that marriage of, of mixed use in that area.
It just, it seems to me, that makes sense, but it seems to me pretty clearly stated that that is illegal to change the zoning for one project. And it does seem like that is a very mixed-use area, right in there along the main corridor, but that doesn't change the illegality of this one action, it seems to me. And my other question was that, it seemed odd for him, for, to go through all of this when he hasn't submitted a site plan yet. He has to meet the historical zoning, the historical commission requirements before he can do anything, and so why to go through all of this when he hasn't submitted a plan for those essential activities yet?
I wouldn't put myself in the, in the project manager's shoes, but I would assume that they want to see if they could get an approval for a zone change before they go through the effort of developing a site plan to be approved as well. I think it would be a significant economic addition for them to take on.
Okay. Well, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Yarovitz?
If I might clarify that answer a little further, we originally did submit a site plan and got an approval for historical review, but as the process has been changed to separate zone changes from contract zoning, all we're getting here is a zone change approval, and we still have to resubmit a full set of site plans, as just indicated going into the January meeting, for another approval, all the rest of it. But without a zone change, there's no point in submitting a site plan, so we're going in a new order that the town is taking for separating these things out.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me, or...
Do you have anything else to say?
No. [laughing]
Okay. Is there anybody else here to speak on this project? Not seeing any, we're going to go ahead and close this for public discussion, and take it back to the commission. Do we have a motion that anybody would like to make?
I'll make a motion. I think we need two, actually. And I'll make the first one to approve case number PZ 2013-18, on the basis of staff recommendations, findings of facts.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
All abstain, due to conflict of interest.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Luchs?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
I'll abstain, because I came in late, so...
Okay. So, we have four, four, the motion, and two abstaining. The motion passes.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to...
We're going to do a second motion on case number PZ 2013-18, for a conditional use permit, or conditional use.
Second.
We get a roll call vote, please?
Can I clarify the motion?
Yes.
So, the conditional use is for what uses?
For the office buildings in a R-14 residential.
Okay, so you want an office? Do you want restaurants, retail?
Well, all those, all those fit in the...
Existing.
All those fit in that category on the R-14. If you read under the R-14, it's small stores, restaurants, office buildings, it has a variety of different commercial buildings that are allowed in an R-14.
So, you want all the uses that are allowed by conditional use in the R-14 to be part of the motion?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, so there's quite a few.
Well, I mean, at some point, the restaurant could become something else.
Okay, that, that's fine. I just want to, I'm just trying to clarify the motion, so that we know.
Do we have a second on that motion that's on the table?
Yeah, I did second.
As amended, I guess, to clarify what the R-14?
Okay, second, as amended.
Okay, now that we have a second, we have a discussion on that particular issue. Commissioner Garcia?
Without talking about the particular project, is it, it's not on the agenda as an action item, can you still place it on as an action item, the conditional use? I don't see that.
It was...
On that particular case?
It was discussed in last month's meeting to allow that.
And I understand that, because there's been discussion on that, but my, what I'm trying to understand here is, it's not listed on the agenda as an action item, even though it was discussed, it was only, the only action item on this is on the zone change. So, I'm just trying to get clarification.
Right, yeah. No, I had that question, too, when I was reading through it, and then I read the, if you read the minutes of the last meeting on that, and it was approved as both of them together in the minutes.
I just, transparency, you know?
Right.
Public notice of the agenda doesn't say that, so...
Right, well, that's, that's where I was a little concerned about, when I was reading on it also, and then I went back and it was, I mean, it says that the attorney said if it was, it was allowed, because it was in the, in the, in the request.
Right, we had, we had the form filled out, and we had the criteria for both filled out as one page, so I treated it as a rezoning, because I, you know, this is staff's perspective now. And so, I was recommending it just to be rezoned, and grandfathering in those uses, just because I thought it was cleaner.
And again, I understand all that, but...
Right.
But the agenda doesn't say...
Right. For a conditional use. It doesn't say for a conditional use. I agree with you on that point. Put it on the minutes.
I, I don't know. I think that the, that the history of the case, this has been before the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think, three or four times now, and I think that everybody in the public is well aware of what we're doing, so I don't think it's an issue to go forward with the conditional use permit, if that's the pleasure of the commission.
I had one comment.
Yes, Mr. Yarovitz.
Application went in simultaneously with a conditional use and a zone change, but it was treated as a combined package when I submitted it.
And to that point, I don't, I don't think that there's any distinct issues that the public would have regarding the conditional use permit versus the rezoning. I think it's, I think it can be looked at cumulatively. I think that Ms. Perkins is making a proper distinction for us, but for the purposes of making this additional motion, I don't think we're affecting any notice issues for the public, so I think we can go forward with the, with the motion.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Abstain.
Okay. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucks?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Abstain.
Okay, so, again, we have four zero with two abstaining. The motion passes.
All right, we're moving on to case number PZ 2013-20. It's a matter of the owner, property owners Frederick and Elizabeth Burns. Are you, are you present?
Here.
Great. Ms. Perkins, would you like to tell us a little bit about this application?
This application is a request for a side yard setback variance from the required seven-foot side yard to a three-foot, a seven-inch side yard setback. The property owners have a house, and they're saying that the house covers most of the lot, so the only area that they really have to build on is on the side of their house, and they will be encroaching on that, on that side yard setback. And they want their studio, the art studio, to be 20 feet wide. They have rented space that has been a little narrower, and it's prohibited them from really doing the art that they want to pursue, and so they were looking for a variance to actually make the studio go into the side yard, so that they can have finally a studio space that's wide enough to do the work, the art that they want to pursue. I believe their architect is here as the, as their agent, and I submit my staff report for the record. Thanks.
Would either the property owner or the agent, on behalf of the property owner, like Please state your name for the record.
Frederick William Burns.
And do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Okay, so this is a, an art studio for painting and drawing, and I've, as has been stated, I've rented spaces over the years that have, I've adapted to, but have been less than perfect, or, you know, create substantial problems for my work. And so, now I have the opportunity to build a studio that has a north-eastern facing, which is perfect light for a painting studio, and a drawing studio for that matter. And we bought the house with this knowledge, that we would have the possibility of building into that space, and, but we'd like to have the 20-foot width, which creates the right angle for the light. If, there's ample space on the east-west axis, but the north axis is really the critical Do you have any questions? I don't know what more I can say.
Well, I guess I'm interested in this angle of light quotient.
Well, the, the ideal situation is to create a 90-degree angle between the incidence of light, which is where it comes from, say, through a skylight or a window, and the subject, so that the artist, who is at a right angle to the subject, observes light falling on the subject, which creates the clearest delineation of the form. In this case, it would be people primarily, but also still lifes. And the width of the window is, the width of the studio allows for the correct angle of light, which, the correct angle of light is 60 degrees, which approximates the average height of the sun, which is, seems the most natural to human beings as a source of light. So, if you... So, if you go higher than 90 degrees, you create artificial angles, and the lighting of the subject becomes unpleasing, and it, there, it's just more difficult. And the, the width also allows for two subjects to be painted at the same time, so that you could have a, a portrait painting going at the same time that you have a still life. You have room for both. You also have the ability to move to any angle, the artist can move to any angle to the subject, from, almost from the side, either side, to the center, to any angle in between, and a, a narrow studio obviates that possibility. You can't move any farther than the wall allows you to move. Also, I will have other artists who come, and we would share the cost of a model, so I need additional room for artists to, to be in the, in the studio, and, but the, the light issue is something that is defined by the sun, and, and I, I would want to position the studio to, to create the greatest success with the, the arrangement. So, does that explain it?
It does.
Okay.
I got a question. How, how is three and a half feet gonna make a difference in that, and when you can actually put natural lighting with, just the design of the room itself, and, and why not expand into the other side rather than into, into that short, narrow area?
Well, the other side is where the house is. The, the studio will, if, do you have the drawings? Because it, it joins the, the house.
Seems like you would have room to expand in the opposite direction rather than into that, that, I just don't, I'm not understanding where you're coming from.
The opposite direction, you mean the east-west axis?
Right.
Well, there, I need plenty of room there, too, because you need to get far away, excuse me, from the subject, so that when you're drawing or painting, your, your arm's length to the subject, and so there are distortions that occur in the drawing that you cannot see until you get far back from the subject, and then you can quickly see that the head is too big, the hands are too small, that, that you've made sort of inevitable observational errors because you're so close to the subject. Gainesborough had his pencil, or his drawing device was 14 feet long, so that he could get far enough back from his sub, his painting that he would see it correctly. I don't plan to do that, but it, on that axis, I need space to get farther back. On the north-south axis, I need to have it be wide enough that I can move all the way from one side to the other, because the north light, that is the organizing element. The north light is the, the most important axis of the arrangement, and that's why I need to go to the north. I have to move to the north to, to get that space.
Chairman, I have a question.
Oh, Commissioner Perez?
Yes, looking at your new, new studio there and your existing courtyard.
Right.
If you would take your studio five feet towards Roberts Road, you would be in your setback, and you would come into your existing courtyard three and a half feet, you would, you would meet all your qualifications. You'd lose a little.
Well, it would only be the width of the courtyard.
Yeah, you'd just lose three and a half feet of your existing courtyard, and you'd meet all the, all the requirements.
Well, I, we wanted to keep the courtyard as it is, and I'm not sure if there would be complications. Maybe Bill could speak to that as the architect, but it was.
And you'd still get the exact same lighting, you'd have all your same angles, there'd be no change. You'd just move the building forward and back towards the courtyard, and you'd have all the, all, you'd meet all the qualifications.
Well, it makes then that the courtyard becomes that much narrower, and as a, and I think it would also create a collision with the door from Jane's office on the eastern side, because her office comes out in that direction, but I'd have to look at the, the drawing to see that. But there's, I'm not quite sure. Bill, do you have anything to add to that? Is it?
Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Bill Hoffman.
And do you swear to tell the truth?
I do. Well, I think the courtyard's gonna become too small, it'll be unpleasant, basically unusable. I think it's the answer to that question. Maybe 16 feet wide now, and then, you know, with a 12-foot-high walls on either side, and squeezing it in like that, it's basically not a very pleasant space.
Okay.
What neighbors are to the nor, to the north of the property?
Say again?
What neighbor, what's to the north of the building?
Uh, the neighbor to the north is setback quite a bit. There's about 36 feet between her house and her property line, and given the additional three feet, there'd be about 40 feet between houses, you know, which is a pretty large distance for that neighborhood.
Have you spoken to the neighbor?
That's what I was just gonna ask.
Have you spoken to the neighbor?
I have not, no.
No.
Is there any opposition? Has there been any opposition submitted?
I believe one of the neighbors is actually here and would, would like to talk, but you need to ask her.
Well, we'll wait one moment. Commissioner Garcia, do you have any more questions for the applicant?
I, yeah, just for the applicant. I, I'm just curious, is this a hobby or your livelihood, basically?
Well, I'm retired. I taught for 25 years at Duke University, and I recently moved to Taos to pursue my ambition to be a painter full-time, not a teacher, so, it is, it's my main activity. I have one other point about narrowing the.
Sorry, try to turn around a little bit.
Oh, sorry. One more point about narrowing the patio space is that it has, it has garden planters along that edge, which would be eliminated if that wall moved in, so additionally making the space less pleasant, you know, as what it's designed for, which is just a place to, you know, have breakfast and, and read, whatever. So, that's, I just wanted to add that last point.
Did you have another question, Commissioner?
I've got a question on the.
Commissioner Romero?
On this three feet here, the drainage and off the side of the roof and stuff, which way is that gonna go, and would that encroach into the other property?
No. It, the drainage would go towards the roof of the main house and would drain off the back of the house. Is that what you mean?
Yes.
It would not drain off in the direction of the neighbor's house.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. We're gonna open this up for, for the public to, to talk. Was there a neighbor that was here? Yes, ma'am, come on up. Please state your name for the record.
Yvonne Marsh.
And do you swear to tell the truth?
I do. I'm actually here on behalf of my mother also. She is the neighbor. I do live with her, but due to age and health conditions, she is not able to come. I am her power of attorney also. The questions that she was concerned about was, we have not seen any of the plans or anything.
How close does she live?
Excuse me?
How close does she live? Is she, is she right next door to her neighbor?
No, not right next door. Their house is separated by a road. It's a, it was a private, it's always been a private dirt road that went up a hill to Jean Sanchez's house. Okay, so that actually separates their house from our fence. Our house is still setback away from our fence. The fence is what's closer to their property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And what she's concerned about is how close that addition would be to the fence, how close any landscaping would be to the fence also. There is a ditch that has, that is up, that Jean Sanchez had used at one time, I believe, to water his property, and we had one time, it's been several years ago, but that ditch flooded our yard, and so we don't know if that is still open, if it's, it's still something being used, but it could come down that road, so she's concerned about that, if that is something that is closed off or is still potential flooding, you know, for our yard. Also, according to whatever they may do, how close that may be, you know, you just addressed the fact that the drainage from the roof or anything like that would go off the back of the house. She was concerned about that, any type of runoff or anything coming into our yard. If we have a lot of snow, where would the snow removal be? How much space would there be to remove anything, or if it needed, if it would be piled up? She's concerned about any type of flooding of the yard. Also, as well as size and location of windows or doors, they're, the, again, we haven't seen the plan, so I don't know, but if the windows would be facing the side of our house, those are bedrooms and a bathroom, and so there's a concern there about privacy.
I have a question. Now, you're talking about the, the ditch that runs along the road.
Mm-hmm.
Where this addition is, is that on the road, is it actually on the road?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know how, I'm assuming that the addition will be on the road, part of the road. I, I don't know. Again, I haven't seen the plan, so I don't know.
Okay.
But I'm thinking that maybe it will be. It'll take up, you know, a portion of the road where it is now.
I'd like to ask the applicant if there's an essay here.
Of course.
Yeah, we own the whole property.
You're gonna have to.
You need to come to the microphone.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions or concerns?
I think that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And before you come up, is there anybody else that's here to speak on this application? Okay, Mr. Burns.
If you permit me.
Commissioner Lukes would like to ask you a couple questions.
Mr. Burns, do you have an essay here on your property?
No.
So, the ditch that this lady was referring to, what is that?
Well, I, I'm guessing that it was a ditch that Jean cut into the edge of the road, which he, he used to use that road with his wife to go and come to their house.
So, previous owners just did that for drainage purposes?
Yeah, I think it was an answer to Mary Pacheco's concern about flooding, and, but I've never seen any water in that ditch to speak of, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I have one more question.
Commissioner Perez?
If this addition was added to your property, what would be the total coverage of, of space onto your?
Again, I would have to ask Bill for that calculation, but, do you know?
Well, I know it's, uh, doesn't cover, I don't know exactly, it's a percentage.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question for, for staff.
Yes, Commissioner.
Are there other, in that neighborhood, other variances, setback issues in that neighborhood? Do you know?
I don't really know. I have the vicinity map here that actually shows an awful lot of the houses that seem to be on the property line, and they're not meeting the setbacks within that neighborhood. I don't know how many of those have been grandfathered in versus being given variances for.
I, I would like to know that before we make a decision, only because if there's a precedence there already of allowing that, that would sway my decision one way or another.
But some, but something cannot set a precedence for a particular case.
Well, okay, I, I understand that, but in my evaluation, if, if there are several homes and they, and there are setbacks, and I understand a lot of them probably were grandfathered in, but if there were, if there were variances, I would like to know that.
Can I add a point here? The, the house that is on the other side of our house, the other adjoining house, is about one and a half to two feet from the property line. I mean, it, it has a permanent structure that's right practically on the property line.
Yeah.
And somebody could clarify this for me, the historical reasoning for why we have the setbacks as they are? Why, why is a side yard setback declared to be seven feet?
It was arbitrary, it was totally arbitrary. There was no, no.
Was it for drainage purposes or essayes or?
Axis.
Access, just to the side of your own yard?
You know, I, I wasn't here when the code was written, so I don't, and I don't know how the setbacks were defined and why, what the reasons were for them.
I think a lot of it was plagiarized from other communities and.
I know that in, in Los Alamos, after the Cerro Grande fire, we were looking at setbacks and doing flag lots and trying to get, and looking, we looking at our zoning code, and one of the concerns was actually fire separation between houses. So, we ended up having a minimum separation of seven and a half feet between buildings, but that was fire code kinda setting that and talking with the fire marshal, so I have no idea. You know, I could try and research and see if I could find that answer.
If I may, I think a lot of the, the homes in those areas have been there for such a long time that when they did establish the, the zones and, and the setbacks and whatnot, they therefore got grandfathered in, so that's probably why your neighbor is as close as it is, has been there probably quite some time. I don't know how long your home has been there, but that's, I, I think that's the reason for, you know, why, why those are so close at times.
Uh-huh. One of the, I just wanted to mention that we, we heard that one of the neighbors was concerned about privacy issues, which Yvonne Marsh just talked about, and we've amended the design of the windows. We've lifted them up higher to guarantee privacy to the neighbor and to us at the same time, so I just wanted to make that note. It's, it's incorporated in your plans, the change that's been made.
So, Chairman, just for the benefit of the commission and Commissioner Garcia, I'm familiar with Roberts Lane. I, I did, I remodeled a home on Roberts Lane, and it's a, it's a closely knit community just because some, some homes are, if not right on the property line, just inches, literally. So, the whole street has that close, almost zero-outline looks.
I've got a question, I don't know for staff or.
Commissioner.
Educate me a little bit here, but what is the setback requirements between building sites from one building to another, not so much property lines, but what would be considered a?
That would be given by the, by the setbacks, the side yard setback and rear and, and front setback, then you add it to the setback of the adjoining property, and that's your, that, that would be your building, from building envelope to building envelope, basically, which is the addition of the two setbacks.
And those are all.
And those are all, those are all set based on, on what the, the zoning is, and they usually, you know, they, they can range from seven to 10 feet or, or greater than that.
Yeah, the zoning is seven, seven, 15, and 20, if I remember correctly, or may, may have been changed, no?
And that is from property line, not from the edge of a build.
It's typically property line.
Yeah, 'cause I know that with what I do, we can do certain things within 10 feet of a buildable structure, so that was where I was going with this. If we were gonna be, with three feet, would we be taking away from somebody's opportunity to build within that seven feet? But if it's from property line, you've clarified that.
I do have a question, Chairman, to the applicants. Do you have any, any utilities in that side where you're gonna want to get that, that, that area where you want to expand your, your studio into? Is there any utility lines, sewer, water, gas, anything? Have you identified anything like that in that area?
Well, if I understand correctly, there are, there is a phone line in back, and there is a power line along the back of the lot, and Roberts Lane all the way up there. Do you, am I answering?
Well, in, in the area where you're gonna put your studio and you want to go into the setback in that particular area, is there anything in there that's gonna cause any problems?
No, there's nothing in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, sir.
Not accustomed as I am to public speaking. Let me say, I'm one of the older.
State your name.
Residents.
Sir, could you please, sorry to be formal, but you did take your hat off.
I'm one of the older neighbors in the neighborhood.
Did you state your name?
In fact, there's only two of us.
Could you state your name for the record, sir?
In that, in that neighborhood. I'm C.B. Truill.
And could you swear to tell the truth? It's a formality.
And I'm speaking in behalf of the, I, I've gone and looked at the plan well. I, I think it doesn't detract from any of the location that we live. I'm kind of the self-employed, self-proclaimed Maradomo of the, of the street, you know? I've been there 55 years.
He's a local 55.
The young lady's family and the other, other lady there are older than I as far as residency, but in looking at the neighborhood, and we've had, we've had different people that have put in, we even had a, a feed store, we had a art gallery, we've had all kinds of things in that neighborhood. That, that, that thing was started by Roberts, and I live in the original house that Roberts built, made out of railroad ties, not the Doby railroad ties. And I, I think that this would be a good addition, and I don't think it compromises any of the, the good part of the, of the neighborhood that we have in, in Roberts. I would certainly support this thing, and I hope that you would see, find a way to help these people out because they're, it looked like they'd be good neighbors to bring into Taos. And I wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for the work you guys do.
Remind me, are we, are we down to a one-meeting situation for something like this yet, or are we, is this a two?
No, this is, this is the preliminary hearing. We still need to have a final hearing in January.
When is, when is that gonna change, by the way?
Well, the second hearing on that's tonight, but then I need to take it to council.
Oh. So I'd like to go ahead and close the, the public hearing. Is there anything, discussion amongst commissioners, or does somebody want to make a motion?
I'd, I'd like to just say, Mr. Chairman, I'm all in favor of density where it's appropriate, and, you know, the, the seven, seven-foot side yard setback was totally arbitrary and without any, any merit in just taking up land between, between houses, where there could be more houses if the setbacks were different, but they are what they are. And I don't think this, granting this variance would harm anybody or anything. I think it will be an accommodation to, to our new neighbors in town, and I, I don't see any detriment to the town from granting this variance.
Thank you, Commissioner Luks. Anybody else in the commission like to speak? That being said, do we have a motion on the table?
I'll make the motion to approve preliminary, grant preliminary approval to case number
And I will second.
Roll call, oh, excuse me, do we have a discussion on that? Having seen none, roll call vote, please.
Okay, Commissioner Romero?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Luks?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
The motion passes six to zero.
Okay. Thank you. We're gonna move on now to case number, which is now G moved to D, PZ 2013-24. Susan Milkley, I believe, and Alex Abeta is the agent on behalf of that project.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have to abstain from this case because I own a lot right next door, and I sold this lot to, to the applicant.
Okay, thank you for the disclosure. Are there any other disclosures about this particular applicant? Okay, having heard none, Mr. Abeta, would you like to swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Okay, would you like to tell us about your project?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commission members, if you go over to your application book, we've included a site plan of a piece of property that's .22 acres. It's on the Hill Street. It's lot number 10, and my client purchased the lot and now wishes to split it in half. As indicated, the lot is .22 acres. We want to create two lots of 0.11 acres each. Those lots would result in sizes of 4,009, oh, 4,790 square feet, 4,776 square feet. This property is owned R14 and has a minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet. So in order to get an administrative lot split approved, we would need to get a variance approved first that would allow going from the 7,000 square foot minimum lot size to less than that. If you look at the site plan sheet A that's in your packet, the property is owned R14, which technically would allow three units on this property as, as one lot, .22 acres, would allow a three-unit condo project, a three-unit apartment project, or even a duplex or triplex attached or semi-attached building. However, my client wishes to build a single-family casita on one lot and sell the other lot for someone else to build a lot. So the net result would be is two single-family homes would fit better on this lot than a triplex or a three-unit condo project. The setbacks would be as required by R14. On the two lots, we would have seven-foot side setbacks, we would have 10-foot rear setbacks, 20-foot front setbacks. The maximum building on either lot would, would not exceed the 2,246 or 2,243 square feet. That's based on the setbacks. It does not exceed the maximum lot coverage of 50% allowed under the R14. We also include in the application the findings of fact, questions required by the code and the responses that we provide. And we acknowledge that the applicant is creating the request or the need for the lot split. However, we feel that the R14 density that's designated on the property would allow three units, so that conflicts with the one or two units on one lot. So for that reason, we believe that the variance is justified. Currently, the lot is vacant. It had a lot of Chinese elm trees on it that we cleaned out. The property to the south is owned by Mr. Lucas, as, as indicated. Vacant on the east. Those properties are vacant and highly overgrown with trees and grass. On the north, there's residential property, and on the west, there's a couple of homes. Continuing on with the finding of fact variance, the project is 100% funded by private funds. It does not create a hardship or economic impact on the town of Taos. It does not create any public health, safety, or welfare issue, and it does guarantee the neighborhood two single-family homes rather than a three-unit condo project. Are there any questions?
I have a question. The question I have is, what, what's the guarantee on it being a single-family residence? Not the one that you're intending on building, but the other lot that would be split off that would be for sale. Who, how could you guarantee that that was a single-family home?
The remaining lot, which is .11 acres times the R14, would be about 1.5 units, and technically you can't build one and a half units, so the remaining lot would be allowed no, no more than one unit, basically, whether it's a small unit or up to that 2,200 square feet. So the R14 zoning is what would restrict the other lot to one unit.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Now, I know that your argument is that two homes separate and two separate lots would be better for that area as opposed to a condo or a triplex or a duplex. Why do you believe that?
Today, I drove through the Hill Street, and, and the development along the Hill Street are pretty much single-family units. Some are on larger lots, some are lower density, some are larger density. Then the street immediately to the west, Dolan Street, I observed a six-unit condo project, which I make reference to, and on that property, they actually took two lots of .22 acres each and built six units. And driving through that condo project, they're two-story units, the density is very high, and actually, they're right at the R14. So it's my belief that for the V Hill Street neighborhood, two single-family units would be better than a three-unit condo project based on density.
Is that entire neighborhood R14?
Yes, it is. On both sides of the Hill Street and all the way west to Libert and Dolan and Montoya Street.
Ms. Perkins, you obviously had a different take on it in your staff report. Do you have any comments that you'd like to give to the commission?
The problem with granting variances is that there has to be a hardship with the lot, so like, the lot would be odd-shaped, which would prevent it from being able to be built on. That's usually how a variance is granted. And it's, usually, the lot will be unique in some way from the rest of the neighborhood, which would also be a reason for giving a variance. So legally, it's very hard to support this request, and thus, my staff report recommends denial due to that, and I submit my staff report as part of the record.
Mr. Chairman, we did, or I did receive one phone call from one of the neighbors, Lawrence V. Hill, and I don't see him in the audience, but he did indicate that he was okay with the project. No one else called my office either for or against, other than Lawrence V. Hill.
And to that, there was a, a submission to the commission by Luis Reyes, who is the next-door neighbor.
He's immediately adjacent to the west side.
And to some, rather than read the, the thing into the record, I would ask that the, that Ms. Perkins put this into the record as well, but to summarize it, it basically was concerned because there wasn't any communication with Mr. Reyes. He'd, he'd want to know what's going on, what type of house is going in there, that kind of thing. So I think that, that, that communication may be helpful for the future of the project.
Because he did receive a certified letter, but, you know, the application was on file at planning and at my office, but we can definitely follow up with him if we decide to move this forward.
He did state in the email that he was out of town on a business meeting, so he couldn't make this meeting.
And all he's asking is for you to meet with him.
And that's not a problem.
To clarify some of his concerns.
And I want to point something else out, Ms. Perkins, that you stated in your staff report, and you, you stated that you agreed that the, or the staff agreed, that the applicant's request was not contrary to public interest and the neighborhood's character. It observes the existing spirit of the zoning ordinance, the conservation of property values, the applicable provisions of the town's master plan for higher-density, affordable housing, the protection of public health, safety, and welfare, and substantial justice is done. It's just that legally, that you can't create your own hardship, and that's the reason that staff is, is recommending denial. Is that right?
That's exactly right. You summarized that quite well. The other thing that I must mention, since you're talking about neighbors and their input, I have a letter from another adjacent property owner who is, is elderly, so she couldn't make it out at night, and I don't know if you want me to, to read the letter into the record, or if you just want me to make it part of the record. Her concerns are very similar as far as how, how is the lot going to be used, how can you guarantee how the property's gonna be used with the, with the lot split, two single-family dwelling units? Where will the driveway be for the vehicles, things like that?
And I think that what I'm understanding from the agent is that it's kind of, at such a small acreage, it's kind of gonna be forced into a certain shape and size and direction anyway for even the unknowns of that other property that we don't know anything about on who it would be sold to.
Mr. Chairman, and, and we do believe that with the R14 zoning designation, that, that kind of in itself puts the applicant or the owner in a hardship in that it basically says with R14, you can do three units. All my client wants to do is two units, but she wants to do them as single-family units. So, you know, with all due respect to staff, we disagree that we haven't shown any hardship, and we believe that two units is better than three units if, if it's a condo project. Because the six-unit condo project I visited today on the south end of Dolan Street, it's actually empty. All the units are empty, and the structures are just sitting there. Two single-family units would assure that they're occupied. My client is a doctor in Albuquerque, and she plans to live there part-time summers, sometimes in the winter, and the other unit, we don't know who would end up building, but chances are, these units would be occupied at a higher rate than condo units.
What, if, if you know off the top of your head, what are some similar acreages of adjacent properties in that area?
If you look at the Taos County property tax map in the application packet, if you go to the last page, there is lot number 10, which is, actually, I'm wrong, lot number eight, which is parcel 466151. That lot is approximately .11 acres in size. However, based on a site visit today, if you look at lot 25, it appears that they either did a lot line adjustment, or they married the two lots together, and they built a huge home, and their lot coverage is probably pushing to 50%. And their, their building actually crosses from lot 25 over to lot eight, but prior to that new construction this summer, lot eight was actually a, either a non-conforming lot of .1 acres, or it went through some variance process, but I'm not aware of how that happened. So that's the only lot within the 300-foot area that is actually, you know, approximately the size of the lot that we're asking for, which is .11 acres.
Now, as it stands now, though, lot 10, the one that, that, listen, for this application, would it be considered one of the larger, the largest lots on that side of the road?
It's probably one of the largest or as large as the other large lots.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
The applicant is a doctor. Just looking at the application and the information here, is there, because there has to be some kind of reason for her to do this, a hardship or something like that. Is this a financial thing for her, or what is this?
Doctor Susan Miko has indicated to me that if, if she can't get the variance approved, that the lot will probably sit vacant until she sells it to someone to build a three-unit condo project. In other words, she's telling. In other words, she's telling me that she can't afford, she already bought the lot, paid for it in full. She can't afford to build one house on it and not sell one lot off. So, her goes to sell one lot, get some money out of there, throw some more money at it, and build her house, and not have a mortgage.
So, wouldn't that itself be the hardship? I'm just asking, Ms. Perkins.
Well, but it's, you know, it is a self-created financial hardship. But in the real hardship, it's the R14 says you can do three units. And the lot size, or the minimum lot size of 7,000 doesn't really allow that without a variance.
And she can build an individual house on that.
A single-family individual house, no common wall, no semi-attached. And then, the buyer would be forced, of the remaining lot, the buyer would be forced into one unit because the R14 only allows 1.5 units, which is technically one unit. So, that would assure the neighborhood, and I don't know if any of the neighbors are here tonight, that would assure two units on these two lots, rather than three condos on one lot.
No, but what I'm saying is if she built one unit on her total property without doing a split...
She's indicating that based on the price that she paid for the lot and the cost of one unit, that it's cost prohibitive to her. And that instead of doing that, she would probably sit on the lot for a while and then sell it to someone that would do a condo project.
But it's not guaranteed that they're going to do a condo unit. You keep pushing condo unit, you're pushing condo unit, and you have no guarantee that it's going to be a condo.
Well, and I understand that. It could become a three-unit apartment project. I just don't know. Based on what happened, you know, when the market was hot, you can drive up Lieber Street, you can drive up Dolan, and there's plenty of condo units that pushed R14. There's plenty of apartments. The Hill Street, however, is more residential, single-family units. And that's why we want to keep it single-family and do two units rather than three condos. But all I'm saying is the worst-case scenario is that someday it could become that. Susan would not do a three-unit condo. She would rather sit on it, sell it to a future buyer, and that buyer would do whatever they feel they need to do with it.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to open this up for public discussion. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this application? I saw some hands raised as being here on this application, but nobody would like to speak. Is that correct?
I'm a neighbor, and I own the property beyond the hill.
Okay. Would you like to speak?
No, I just wanted to see what was really going on.
Okay. Okay. Cool. Thank you.
There are 14 people, though, in the condos on Dolan. At least two, they're at work all the time. You never seen them.
Ms. Perkins, do you have something?
No, I don't.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. I guess we're up for a discussion amongst the commissioners and/or a motion. Do I have either of those things from the commission?
I'll make a motion to take it to a final decision next month, I guess. Case number PZ 2013-24, I submitted.
And do we have a second?
I will second.
Okay. Any further discussion? I'd like to say something just briefly to the applicant that it'd probably be in the applicant's best interest to make sure that Mr. Reyes has contacted regarding the discussion about what's going on here, to make sure that the next hearing goes smoothly.
We will go ahead and meet with Mr. Reyes and also with the lady that submitted the letter to make sure they understand the proposal.
Yes.
And that way, we can hopefully come back for the next public hearing without them raising concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Okay. Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Luke's? Oh, you're the upstee, sorry. Commissioner Press?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and move on. We are looking at, I guess we're on E. And E is now the PZ 2013-22, which is to allow for agricultural uses in C1 and C2 zones. Ms. Perkins, would you like to give a presentation on this item?
I, as I understand, this item has been in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission for several meetings now. I was not involved in all those discussions. At the last meeting, when this was, it was a preliminary hearing, we talked about allowing gardening in all the zones within the town. And I didn't put in a definition for gardening. I think the commission needs to give me some input on that. And then, staff is recommending to only allow agricultural land uses, which includes, given the code definition, raising livestock and ranching, be allowed through a conditional use permit in the C1 and C2 zones. That was a recommendation that the commission seemed to be leaning towards in the last preliminary hearing. Staff would be much more comfortable with doing a license to start with, since we don't have a lot of history with allowing agricultural uses in commercial zones. We also had, Commissioner Garcia asked us time, how many parcels are five acres or more? We did get a couple maps put together.
Wow. I'm impressed.
One of them, it's actually showing all the lots that are five acres or more. Some of them are being used for commercial uses. And then, we have another map that actually shows the vacant commercial property of five acres or more. And I believe that there's...
Is that the purple?
There is 29 that are total and 10 that are vacant.
There's 29 total five-acre-plus properties in Taos.
That are zone commercial.
And 10 that are vacant.
And 10 that are actually vacant, that are zone, either C1 or C2.
That's good to know.
And what complicates these maps is that we have zoning, and the zoning are the different colors. So, you know, we probably need a...
Yeah. Do you want to give a presentation to the public on this a little bit?
Okay, so the parcels that are over five acres are the ones that are in white on this map. These colors are the zoning. So, like, commercial C2 is designated in red, so a lot along here. But we are actually showing here, these are the parcels that are five acres or more that are zone either C1 or C2. So, they're all in here. And then, there's two at the bottom here. I think there's two more. So, these are the ones that are currently vacant in C1 or C2. And then, this one shows, again, the parcels over five acres. And then, it shows the ones that are crosshatched are the ones that actually have commercial uses on apparently.
Thank you.
I have a question. What criteria would the license be subjected to?
We need to define that. One of the problems that the town attorney has with this is that, that's part of the problem, is where do you draw the line? What legal argument can we use for saying, well, we can only have, like, two cows per acre, or so many chickens per acre? That's one of the problems that we're running into. How do you legally defend if it's challenged, where to draw the line?
Do you have to defend it? I mean, if that's what the town wants, that's what the town wants.
Well, you may have to defend it at some time. Somebody could come up against the town and say, well, how come you allowed his two cows, but you're not allowing my three goats? You know, and there could be a lawsuit. And the town has to defend that.
I mean, there can be lawsuits for even more stupid reasons.
Yeah, well, they're out there every day.
I think what the attorney, without getting into a legal analysis, but legally speaking, you can't make arbitrary and capricious laws. And this could be seen as one without some kind of verificate, like, some kind of support for why you're actually doing it. And I think that's what the town attorney is concerned about, is having the entire ordinance theoretically being challenged as arbitrary and capricious and unconstitutional, and therefore, not applicable, so...
But it seems like the whole code is, you know, arbitrary and capricious. Why do we have setbacks? Why do we have, why is R14, why does my neighbor have R4, and I have R14? I mean, you know, this could go on and on, if you really want to look at it that way. Because we were just discussing it a little bit earlier. You know, why was it made seven-foot side yard setback? Arbitrator capricious. I don't want a seven-yard setback. Sue the town. Anyway.
I have a question.
Commissioner Lucero.
This whole process, for this particular ordinance to change, or that would affect the C2, C1 area, was this brought by property owners that owned the property within the town? That have this commercial properties that want this? Or how was this brought by? I mean, was it an application that was submitted to us? Or, I'm trying to figure this out here, because...
Well, it's legislation in the making. You know, legislation can be brought by anyone. It has to ultimately be approved by a governing body. But in this particular case, there were some concerned citizens that would like more uses with commercial land that's basically vacant. And they could be using it for agricultural purposes in a much more effective way. And frankly, there's a longer, broader philosophical discussion that's been going on amongst those people regarding the blending of uses throughout our community to make it more complete and whole, and using the land to live off the land, kind of a thing. And it was actually the commission that took it upon itself to write the legislation to seek approval through the town, so that the town council could approve that legislation once it's agreed upon by the parties involved at this level.
Okay. All right. That gives me a little history. Thank you.
I have a question, Ms. Perkins. Did you amend or decide to come up with a different type of draft regarding the statutory language that would be incorporated? Because all I can see in there is the same, what it seems like, is the same draft that we had submitted originally.
I have the same draft that was submitted originally. And that kind of points out what Commissioner Lucero is saying. It's, this is difficult for staff because staff isn't bringing this forward. This is more a commission's proposal. And the commissioner basically drafted this language. I changed it a little bit just to keep with the intent, I think, of what it was intended. But I haven't worked on it to define, like, what gardening is. And maybe, you know, the commission had, like, you talked about no more than two hoofed animals will be allowed per acre, including, but not limited to. I mean, that kind of detail, I, as staff, don't know what to write there. And so, I've sort of had a hands-off approach. And this is what's making it very, very awkward for myself as staff. I think that there needs to be a definition for gardening. And the current definition for agricultural uses does include ranching and raising livestock. And so, I mean, maybe we want to have a couple other definitions, and depending on the zone, allow more intensity or less intensity or whatever. We did talk about allowing gardening across all the zones. So, we're kind of, we're taking this through the preliminary and final hearing process without actually having exactly what we want defined. And that's where it's getting more and more awkward, because we're now at the final hearing. And I don't have good code to bring forward to council to vote on.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Garcia.
I understand that the commission initiated this, and it's been ongoing for a few months now. But I think our wishes were, you know, brought across of what the intent was. And I thought that staff with legal were discussing some of the language in reference to the ordinance and trying to deal with some of those issues. Except for one of us, we're not attorneys here. So, I mean, I want to act on something, but I also don't want to put us in a position, or the town in a position where they might have to defend themselves. But I was an assumption that there was something going on behind the scenes to try to look at putting some type of ordinance in place. If that's not the case, you're telling me.
Well, you know, if we left this to legal, legal doesn't want to carry this forward. We did look for other codes with other municipalities, and we couldn't find any. Maybe we just weren't looking at the right places. I could really use some help there. I know that there was a couple people that volunteered to provide me with that information, and I never got a phone call. So, you know, it's just making it awkward on staff. I wish I had more information. I have not been included in all the discussions that started before I got here. I feel like Commissioner Lucero, that I came in kind of midstream. And so, I, you know, I can draft something, and we can present it to the council, provided, you know, we can provide the council exactly what's here. I can put it in the format without changing the content. And if you want to give me a definition for gardening, I can add that. And that's how I was proposing that we proceed tonight, if you wanted to go ahead and approve this as a final hearing.
Well, I'd like to say something. This is particularly for a lot of the public that's here as well. In some ways, it'd be great, because there's a pretty strong-willed, I think, commission to put some kind of agricultural use in the C1 and C2 zone. And I think that you could probably even get this ordinance as it is through this commission tonight. But that being said, you take this ordinance up to the town council without a strong will behind the attorney for the town, not giving, maybe even saying that it's arbitrary and capricious, and that the town shouldn't adopt it, then you may get it through this process, but you're not going to get it through the next process. And so, you know, while I have a desire, a strong will, to want to get this thing done tonight, I want something that's a piece of legislation that the town can consider, the town attorney can approve, and that can actually go into effect in an effective way for you, rather than spinning your wills. Because what will happen is if it does go to the town council, and it is denied, it's going to come back here again anyway, and you're going to start over. So, it seems to me that the, where we're having the debate is in two places. Gardening seems to be, to some people, I would imagine, to be kind of an insulting word, because gardening is something that people do in their backyards. What these people are doing is, what they want, I believe, is the ability to massively produce, not, maybe not massively, but on a more, on a more commercial scale, produce fruits and vegetables. And then, I think that's the first debate. I think the second debate is over the hoofed animals, the livestock. And perhaps, we can come up with some kind of plan to where we can define not gardening, but agriculture in a way that will give the majority of people the ability to farm the way that they want in these areas. But perhaps, there can be a meeting of the minds with some of the livestock issues that the town may have regarding ranching, essentially, in the town limits. Any other commissioners that'd like to speak on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think it's a good thing that we're not in the middle of a planting season. So, we have a little bit of time to get something in place. And I think the first decision we have to make is whether we want, we know what we want. We want agricultural uses to be permitted in these two zones. Now, do we want to have it permitted by virtue of a license? Conditional use permit or permitted use, period? I think that's the first decision we have to make, what are we after? Then, the next step would be defining the agricultural use. And I have a suggestion that, Mr. Chairman, you write it and run it by...
Thanks.
By the town attorney, and maybe bring something to the next meeting. And then, we can move it... can move it forward. But tonight, I think we can discuss whether we want it by license or conditional use permit or is it, or it will be under permitted uses, period.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
I don't believe that we're at the point, just looking at it, where we can actually say, okay, we're going to go with this and run with it. I think we have to have a lot more input. You know, I appreciate the people that are here that are in support of it. I think agriculture that's limited to a certain degree is an excellent idea. But I think we also need to have input from the people that live within the city limits that, as to what they want. I don't think it's our place to come in and try to shove something down their throat. I think it's important that we get their input to find out whether they're agreeing with this or not rather than just doing this. I think at this point, we should just table this, maybe have some additional conversations about it and come up with something that's a lot better, something that's more clear and something that all of us would perhaps be willing to vote for at that point.
I'm not sure what you mean, you know, getting input from people. How do we accomplish that? By a referendum or?
No, I think, you know, there's, you know, it's advertised and we want to get people within the city limits come in and give us their input. If they come, if they don't come, then we do what we do. But, you know, at least give them that opportunity rather than not.
Well, I think this is being advertised, right? I mean, the agenda is posted and so anybody who's interested in the town's business is available to them.
I don't agree with that.
Commissioner O'Meara.
I've got a question being that I'm kind of new to this process here that we're doing with this. But on the livestock and ranching and commercial properties, when it comes to the livestock, would we at that point require a special use permit from the people on these properties? As a commercial property owner myself, I don't know if I'd want hoofed animals right next door to, you know, to what I'm doing or if we had a restaurant next door or something like that. And as I was reading through this, I wasn't real clear on what would be required from people using that and.
That's the big question. We don't know that.
And that's what Commissioner Luks had asked. Specifically in the ordinance, though, it would be permitted use, meaning that somebody would not have to ask anybody for anything. They would just, if they had five acres, if they comply with the law, they could have livestock pursuant to that law. That's the way the law reads. Now, what the town is uncomfortable with, with the town attorney, is that that doesn't necessarily fly. And what Commissioner Luks is bringing up is how do we come up with a method to allow for potential livestock? If it's not permitted, then is it through a conditional use permit or is it through a license as has been suggested? And we have the option as the commission now to give direction to the staff or to whoever's writing a potential avenue forward, which path we want to go down. Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I think where I'm really stuck at is the livestock and animals on commercial properties. And I think that there's probably others in this commission that feel the same way. I think, you know, we may be willing to go forward provided that those, the animals, the livestock are basically eliminated from that process and everything else is okay, you know, within that agricultural area. I think that's where I'm at.
Okay. Yeah. We've bantered enough. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this subject? Mr. Cunningham, I think you were first raising your hand or your hat. State your name for the record and do you swear to tell the truth?
True name, Rolz F. Cunningham. I do swear to tell the truth. Eddie.
Yes.
Sorry, Commissioner Lucero. You've lived here your entire life, haven't you?
Yes, I have.
You have. Have you ever seen horses on the property across the street from Casa de Cordoba there?
No, I have not. You're talking your property?
You've never seen a horse on that property?
Casa de Cordoba's?
I think he's referring to the former Shadows.
Former Shadows, yes.
The restaurant.
Oh, God. Not that I can recall. It may have years and years ago, but I don't recall.
There's been horses there for the last 50 years.
Okay, what's your point?
I'm just dumbfounded that anybody even here could, and most of you are mostly in favor of this for sure. I mean, we grew up here. Horses used to ride up and down the street constantly. This is an agricultural community. You want arbitrary and capricious? That was an 80,000-square-foot rule. The land that is in question that I'm now questioning out by the visitor center, we had animals on that for 25 years of my life. Yeah, they got put away for Walmart that didn't get to come in. Now I can't go back to having animals on my land again?
That's not the issue here. That could probably be done in a different avenue.
There are horses that surround the downtown bistro. Towns had no problem with that. There's cows and horses across the street from Sid's supermarket. Let's see, you know, what was the restaurant?
Those are not commercial properties. Those are ag.
Why is that ag and mine cannot be ag?
That's been ag. Your commercial property is not ag right now.
I think, Mr. Cunningham, I think you're.
I'm about to come unglued if you want to know the truth because I just can't believe that anybody in the whole county or town of Taos would not support this. And I defy to find somebody who doesn't.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Is anybody else who'd like to speak?
Yeah, the two ladies on the right.
My name is Micah Roseberry. I swear to tell the truth. Is there anything else? I have to swear. Okay. All right. And I do hear that some of you haven't been here. I think we started in July, actually. And so I actually brought a little material, maybe I could, I don't, I think I might have a copy of some things for everyone. And part of this did come about with a project that I've been involved in. And that's called the Taos Village Farm Project. I'm going to pass that out.
Yeah. I passed it out one time and I know someone will share. You can share.
And so this is a project that's been going on for the past, this would have been the third year. And it is on this property. Okay, so it's this property right here. It's a rather large piece of property. It's adjacent to the Rocky Mountain Youth Corps land and really close to the Juan Gonzalez Agricultural, like where the county fair is. And it's also, right, its closest neighbor would be the Taos Academy School. And so I have a letter here that I'd like to, with some photographs too, of the project, just so you can, you know, kind of be familiar with it. And this is by Karen Moulton, the co-founder of Taos Academy. And they've been coming down probably twice a week during the correct season to the farm and having an education project there. So I want to just pass that out.
You have an answer?
Thank you.
So anyway, this is a letter in support of this project. The other neighbor is the Rocky Mountain Youth Corps. And I have here a letter from Carl Colonius that was actually previously presented and I'd just like to give everyone a copy of that. And these are all letters of support. I don't really want to spend the time to read them into the record.
One, you're partying for farms, you side for apples. And two different projects.
It's apples, yeah.
Apples and oranges.
Well, so let me just, okay, so I'll give you a few more, let me just give you one more thing. That's from the Sangre de Piso Youth Ranch that also visits this project. I just wanted you to have the background materials because really this kind of came about with, by realizing that we were doing something illegal by having this project. And that's really kind of how this suggestion came up, let, you know, oh, it's not legal to have farming or agriculture or gardening in Taos. And so this is just a great example of a project. And it'd be great if we had four of these, in my opinion. I'm an educator. I've been a teacher here for 20 years. And there's a lot of education projects. We have a teacher here who has an education project behind the Taos Elementary. I have some photographs too here that I can pass out later that are from the Parfield Agriculture Project. And I also have here a local food and agriculture, it's from the Albuquerque website, and I'd like to leave that with you too. And the strategy, one, is to increase the amount of food produced inside city limits. And then it kind of goes on and it actually gives, you know, the, kind of instructs all the departments to try to encourage this. And I actually personally have started a cafe that features local food and local produce and local meat. And I just feel like that part of a really strong point for Taos is the economic development, the agricultural development that could come about by integrating this with our tourism and with our, the uses of our land here. So I just wanted you to kind of see, like, I guess, a positive aspect that are supported by neighbors in that area, say where that commercial spot is. And then also, I think that the picture is, and it is that area where there was proposed to be a Super Walmart, which was widely, was very unpopular with the residents of the town and the county. And I believe that that was not allowed to really go forward. And in that area now, what, I think that Mitchell property that's across from Sid's where there's like, you know, it's pastoral, there's, you know, a little, a small herd of cows. That's really what we're talking about, you know, that because this area is, excuse me, Roy, how many acres is that?
Approximately 80 acres.
Okay, so it's 80 acres. Right now, there's like a three-acre concentrated garden, agriculture, vegetable portion. And what we want to do is make like an integrated project and that it would always have that pastoral setting. It wouldn't be a feedlot or, you know, any kind of heavy concentration. But there is that kind of traditional use of land here where you, you know, you rotate your crops and you rotate the animals from pasture to pasture. And somebody who's really familiar with that wasn't able to be here tonight, but Patricia Quintana has been really working with that in our community and actually in the state. And Taos has been earmarked by the Veterans Administration or the Veterans Group, whatever it is in the state, to be really kind of a leader in this therapeutic agrarian. And I know that there is a project with goats in the city that is, or in the town off of Valverde. And I know that there's also a therapeutic garden at the men's shelter. And so I guess, you know, we just maybe, I know there's also an agriculture project at the charter school. I'm not sure, is that the town of Taos, the charter school? The Taos Charter? Yeah. So in other words, I feel like we have all these pockets. We have this going on. And it's really, these places are very sweet, actually. I've seen a few of them in Albuquerque where there's like a tractor and some, you know, vegetation, like some corn and some sunflowers and different things right next to where I went to purchase actually restaurant equipment in Albuquerque. So, I mean, I hear that there seems to be like the need to have maybe better language in the ordinance or maybe a little bit more research. I know that there's, there are other communities that are doing this. This is really cutting edge. And, but I think that I would like to see it go forward as a whole picture. And I think that maybe this, whatever the arbitrary and capricious, I, I mean, I guess I feel like it's arbitrary if I'm not allowed to grow food or have, you know, my own sustenance. And that's really how people survive here. It's a long winter. You can't survive here on beans and carrots. I know there's a lot of vegetarians, there's probably some in the audience, but the truth of the matter is, is that, you know, just that, the ritual of, you know, the one cow, the one pig, the one, that's like part of the culture here. And that really made a big difference. And so what we've been doing with our nonprofit project at Parfield is trying to bring back that connection, in a way, that connection to the past, you know? So the students, they, I think I told you last time how they make the Chico's. And I don't know if I told you how I actually, with the fifth grade class and their teacher, we actually butchered a turkey. And it wasn't my idea, I just was there with the teacher, he does it every year, from Inos Garcia, with, you know, of course, permission from the parents. But the point of it is to connect with where the food comes from and it's not just something that's in California or Mexico or somewhere else. It's here. So, yeah. Anyway, all right.
So what you're pushing for is gardening, right?
It's agriculture.
Wait, let her answer it, please.
Yeah, agriculture.
Right. You're not, agriculture covers a broad spectrum. But you're talking, what you're talking about is strictly farming.
Well, what do you?
Gardening.
Growing crops.
Growing crops.
Well, and there's, there's a rotation of animals grazing and using their compost. And listen, wait a minute, you're right. Okay, well then, I'll go on. I think I mentioned also like the, like a traditional churro sheep project where you have, you know, five little sheep and you shear the wool. And I've actually done this in the school that I started, the Country Day School.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Okay. You said you have a restaurant. I know where your restaurant is. There's animals around there, that's fine. But if you were in the heart of town, you had your restaurant, a neighbor came through and put a bunch of animals next door to you.
Well, I can't think of a five-acre piece in the middle of town, but just.
No, I'm saying.
Okay, for example, let's just say, if I had a restaurant, you know where that cows' field is? Isn't that what it's called, the cows? Where the, by the parking lot, the municipal parking lot and there's the little, I think it's.
Kesnoval.
Kesnoval's horses. Okay, so in a way, that's the closest to town I can think of. Like, I think that would be actually a beautiful place to have a little cafe right there. So, but if, of course, if I was saying having martyrs, martyrs and pretend somebody bought Cars and Park and built a feedlot there, I'd not like that. But I think that, you know, we have to kind of see, like, since we're talking about animals with something that's a five-acre piece or not, I think that narrows it down.
May I interrupt? I'm sorry. Ms. Perkins, how many acres did you, how many lots did you say that were five acres or more?
That are vacant?
No, no, total.
Oh, 29?
29. So.
And how many vacant?
10.
10.
Now, I'm not necessarily talking about the ones that are, that are large enough or the ones that are vacant, but connecting to those properties, there's going to be quite a few properties. And it may be worth doing some research on, you know, whether people surrounding each commercial property that's that large would actually support or not support a project like this as it relates to the livestock specifically. I don't think anybody in this commission has an issue with, with the agricultural, meaning the farming side of things.
Well, does anyone have an issue, just say, you know what field I'm talking about, right across from Sid's?
Sure.
Yes.
And I don't know, but I heard, and I haven't had enough time because of my cafe to research it, but I heard that possibly that Mr. Peralta, when he was the mayor, somehow sanctioned that to remain agricultural.
Open space. There was a referendum on it and it was not approved by the taxpayers to come up with a tax levy to buy that.
It was approved or it wasn't?
It was not. It didn't pass.
But that then got at the status.
Mayor Peralta wanted to, wanted the town to buy it and keep it open space and perpetuating.
Right. But in other words, that's the kind of picture we're looking at. And when I go to Sid's, I, I mean, I don't know, I like that. It doesn't seem to detract from anything. But I think if you had just a row of pens with like cows tied up or something, right? I mean, that's a different thing. I think what we're talking about here is the density per acre is very pastoral. And so as long as someone didn't have more cows, then they would be going against the ordinance. And then it seems to me that that's when you have someone who, you know, says you're out of alignment with the ordinance. So that's what I would tend to think, like, oh, that seems to. So that's what I would tend to think, like, oh, that seems to me to be, make a beautiful Taos, you know, that pastoral with a few cows, right? And that's what this, that's what I, and I didn't write this ordinance, I didn't have any thing with that. And I don't know if, if there's a way to work, I know, Mr. Lee, that you're an attorney, I don't know if, if you can work with the wording to make it seem more appropriate to go forward.
Well, I, I can, but that's not my question tonight. My question is to make sure that you're getting a piece of legislation that's actually going to go forward.
Right. Well, I'm willing to go to the council with it.
Mr. Chair. I, I think a good compromise, as I see it, addressing Commissioner Lucero's concern and Commissioner Romero's statement that he wouldn't like animals right next to his restaurant or window or whatever, make this permanent use, agricultural use, with a conditional use permit. Then, it has to be advertised if somebody wants to put animals on the land. Then the next neighbor, next-door neighbors can come and say, no, I don't, I don't want these creatures here, but corn is okay. That way, I think we're, it's a balanced approach to, to getting something done where the next-door neighbors are not left out of the loop and it's not shoved down their throat, as Commissioner Lucero said. And the applicant has a March and April to get his conditional use permit. Hopefully only one month, because by then we'll be streamlined, right?
Excuse me, I just realized, I feel like I took up all this public time and there are a lot of people who came, I don't know if it would be possible to let some other people.
Sure.
Express themselves if they want to.
Yes, is there anybody else that would like to speak? Please state your name and swear to tell the truth.
If I can talk, it's all those first graders. My name's Connie White, and I swear to tell the truth. I've been involved in the Taos schools since 1995. When they built our new addition, the first grade wing, I looked outside, there was nothing. And so with Rocky Mountain, we built four raised beds. And now I've written so many grants. We have 10 raised beds. And to see the project that Micah and Roy started in a bigger way, and Karen and Taos Academy, it's bigger. I work with the preschool through first grade in that building. And the joy they have of digging that dirt, planting seeds, picking the food, eating the food, is a really small step. So to see whatever many acres to produce food and educational experiences for children and adults alike, and to include animals, because I'm a real horse lover. And there's these trees out in the back of the garden that I, can I fence those in and bring a visiting goat someday or a visiting cow? Because that's also a part of where we get our food. And one animal or a couple animals, people could come and visit. And the kids could come and milk a goat, milk a cow. So I'm just all for seeing more agricultural and animal kind of activities for everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Stephen Greenslade, I swear to tell the truth. I just had a question for y'all, just for clarification. Given the compromise that Commissioner Luke has suggested to make the pretty much not objectionable growing fruit and vegetables, you know, part of the new ordinance with the conditional or whatever different requirement for animals, do you think that would make the legislation something that would be more palatable to the city council? Do y'all see any other areas in which there needs to be adjustment? Or is this good enough, strong enough right now to push it forward?
Well, you're asking us to, to vote without voting. But, so we can't, we can't tell you that. But what I, what I think you're gathering is the same thing that I think that the commission is gathering, is that the, the intentions are, are clear. It seems that we're going to have to come up with some language that requires some kind of permitting process for livestock. And otherwise, the farming side of things, we should be able to come up with something that is clearly defined, as Ms. Perkins said, was gardening. But we should be able to come back with some kind of legitimate draft at the next meeting that will have a lot more traction than we've had in the last six months. That's what I, that's what I would surmise.
I think our biggest challenge is to come up with the language. Then the vehicle, how to, how to implement it will be much, much easier. But the language is what's crucial.
And as for that, is it purely the legal side that you're, that you need to kind of shore up? Or is there some sort of research element that you still are missing to, to get your numbers right for how you rewrite this legislation?
It's, it has to withstand the scrutiny by the town attorney and, and get his support so he can recommend an approval to the council. Because without that, this, all of this is just for nothing.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jennifer Sawyer, and I swear to tell the truth. I guess I just, I worked on this, this, some of the projects over there, and I've seen the kids come and I see how happy they are. And I have some animals myself, and I've seen them come. And animals are farming, like gardening and farming to me are two different things. And so when I think of farming, it's, animals are farming. And I've seen kids come over to my house and see the goats and milk the goats and see how all that process goes. And they've come over wanting to play nothing, video games, and then leaving thinking, wow, maybe there's something cooler in the world than video games. And it's really beautiful to watch that change happen in just a couple of hours, hanging out with animals. This is a beautiful piece of property and a great location for, for what Roy wants to do with it. I think most of the town would be for it. And I, I thought this process was where people came to say they weren't for it, like, thought this was sort of what this was. It's posted, people can come and neighbors could complain, and no one's here complaining. So I feel like the town is for it. And animals are farming. And I don't know if there's Centerville licensing, and I don't know how the, all of that works, but I feel like this, you know, you drive through Españoola and it's all like big box stores and ugly, and then there's this cool little farm, like right in the middle, right across from Super Walmart. And this, you know, place could be that cool little piece of awesomeness in the middle of town, providing, you know, providing education and opportunities for people that don't have it elsewhere.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Michelle Heinrich, and I swear to tell the truth. I have a question, actually. With residential zoning, are you allowed to have livestock? Chickens? I was under the impression that we had.
I don't think so.
Okay. I was just curious about that. Like, because I see horses in town or just outside of town. And I'm not an expert on how everything is zoned. But I mean, it seems to me that we have livestock pretty close to people's homes and to buildings and restaurants. And I was just wondering if there were some arbitrary decision there.
I think R1 permits that. But I don't have my.
Yeah, we have a couple zones that, that permit agricultural. And I think that some of those that you're talking about are defined as residential.
Okay, thank you. So I was just thinking, couldn't that be the same, you know, couldn't you use those same codes and those same rules so that it's not arbitrary and capricious?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, having seen none, I'm going to close the public discussion.
Can you ask how many people are in support of the ordinance?
Uh, the, the public? Is that what you were asking? Uh, sure. Ms. Roseberry wants me to ask who in the audience is in favor of this ordinance? Thank you.
Could I ask a question of the audience? Of the people that came up to speak, how many are, live in town limits? No, of the people that came up to speak?
How many in the audience live in the city limits? It's not everybody, then.
How many people shop at the harvest market that's sponsored by the town?
Well.
Live in this, in the city, it's still my city, I still.
Your city also, you lost a lot of other people as well, so it's just not you.
Yeah, but they're not here complaining, you know, they have their.
Probably because they don't know.
Okay, I think we need to continue on. I think we had another heartfelt discussion about this. I think we have some clarity about the path we're going forward right now regarding non-moving versus moving living things. It's maybe the easiest way to describe it at this point.
How do we move it forward? I mean, where, Ms. Perkins, where do we go from here? What's the, what, what kind of action is the commission to take?
Well, I think it's my original proposal, where I suggested that the commission needs to talk about how they want to define whether the word be gardening or farming. We, we need to have a definition in the code. It, it's a little different, you know, where people talk about whatever, using a word versus a definition in the code. So we need a definition in the code to allow gardening or farming, whatever you want to call it. And then agricultural uses are currently defined in the code as allowing raising livestock and ranching. So, I mean, maybe we need a couple different terms in the code. And then I think that the commission is in support, from what I'm hearing, as far as having gardening being allowed in all zones. And then in the C2, C1, C2 zones, and maybe you want to broaden that to other commercial zones, I don't know. We've only been discussing C1 and C2, allowing maybe livestock or other hoofed animals by a conditional use permit, which is what I was kind of recommending in the staff report and earlier tonight. I don't know if the commission wants to take that direction. I mean, you may want to make a motion to that effect. Those are some of my thoughts.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Romero.
I've got a question. How many agricultural use properties do we have within the city limits?
I don't know, I'd have to look. There, there are actually a couple. And then there's also this overlay, I think it's an RHL. I cited that in the staff report, where you can do an overlay, but you're preserving, it's a little different than what you guys are wanting. It's like you're preserving it for agricultural uses. And, and it doesn't really fit. So there, there are a lot of, and I've, I've cited most of the ones that I think are applicable to our conversation in the staff report.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President.
I think, in my opinion, we should go ahead with the suggestion that Mr. Luke's put before us in a form of a motion. And I think that's more, you know, to everybody's liking, you know? If there's going to be agriculture, I mean, farming, it would be through a conditional use.
True, I'll make the motion.
So, just so I get clarification, the staff recommendation is basically saying what you're going to recommend, am I correct?
Well, you know, I'm not, the, the staff recommends several scenarios. I just think that a conditional use permit, after hearing input from everybody, I think is, seems like the fairest and most balanced approach to accomplishing the ultimate goal of allowing those activities in, in, in those two, two zones. And while giving opportunity to, to the neighborhood to object if it's in fact something that totally inappropriate or too close to some, I don't know, what kind of use would object to it, but perhaps there, there would be. So that, that's why. So, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Mr. Luke's, go ahead.
I'll make a motion.
Public hearing is closed? It's, it's closed.
I'll take one more comment from the public. Go ahead. You want to come up and ask just briefly? Just be quick about it, thank you.
I'm just curious, because it's quickly changing, that you're proposing that it would be a conditional use permit to do farming.
No.
To do.
Agricultural.
Only animals.
Agricultural use as, as defined by the code.
Okay, so.
And subject to, well, anyway, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just trying to clarify. So you're saying you could grow plants?
Right.
Just as your God-given right? If you pass this on commercial land? And then if you want to have any animals, then you have to get a conditional permit?
That's correct, yes.
And what does that entail? You apply to you to get a conditional permit?
To the planning department.
Planning department.
And then you come before us.
Does that take?
And hopefully it will be one.
Be a one.
One, one meeting by, by the time you decide to go ahead with it. By the time this ordinance actually takes effect, which would be probably two, three months from now.
So this might take effect in two or three months, and then you could get a use.
You go to the planning department, apply for it.
And that would take one month?
You'll, you'll come to, before us, and, and you can walk out of here with approval. And then next day you can pick up the conditional use permit.
Okay.
But just, just to clarify, this still has to go to the council to approve?
Oh, I understand.
That's what I'm saying, it will take two, three months to, to, to have this as a, as a law of the town.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll just keep breaking the law all over town.
So I make a motion to permit agricultural uses in C1 and C2 zones with the, under conditional use. And gardening, or would that require two, two motions to allow gardening in all zones and conditional use permit? Okay. Agricultural uses in C1 and C2 with a conditional use permit and allow gardening in all zones.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, we have a second. Is there any further discussion from the commission? No? Having heard none, roll call, vote please.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Luke's?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
The motion passes six to zero. Thanks.
Okay, the time is now 7:39, in case anybody's wondering. Uh, I think we're now moving on to what was D, that's now considered F. And that is PZ 2013-21, ordinance 13-13, regarding appeals to provide alternative to the requirements for certified mailing, to convert the preliminary public hearing on pending applications to the DRC, and to amend the existing application procedure to require the review and processing completed applications only by the town of Taos Planning Department. You want to give a brief explanation of what's going on with this?
Yes, basically, we talked about this before, and this is what Commissioner Luke's has been alluding to almost all night. But we're trying to simplify the, the noticing requirements and also try and streamline the process for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So for the preliminary hearing, rather than having a preliminary hearing and a final hearing, we would have one hearing in front of the Departmental Review Committee, which is the, basically the internal staff. We advertise. We advertise that meeting currently. We actually meet as needed. It's generally on Thursdays at nine or 10 o'clock in the morning. It's right now at 10:00. And that is an open meeting. But we want to, that will be in lieu of the preliminary hearing that has been in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then we'll have a final hearing. In addition, there is a requirement that we have, that whoever's requesting something that goes before the Planning and Zoning Commission, that they do notification to the property owners within 300 feet by certified mail. That has proven to be somewhat of a hardship for area, for, like the R14 where people are in dense areas. It ends up being an expense that is above and beyond the application fee. And so what we're doing is we're putting the burden of proof on the applicant to make sure that they have notified the people within 300 feet of their application. There is something in the state statute as far as rezoning that does need to be done by a certified letter within 100 feet. So those are, that's a summary of the code changes that we are bringing forward to the, to you. And then if you approve the code changes tonight, then it will move forward to the County Council for approval as a code change.
I have just one question on...
Commissioner Perez.
On the, you know, the streamlining? If somebody comes before the, you know, before us and with their request, and it's denied, then that's it. It's, they don't have recourse to come back and say, well, you know, I didn't have my second chance. I mean, I agree with streamlining, but, you know, I'm just looking at what happens in that, in that situation.
If it's denied...
Yeah.
They could appeal it to the council.
Okay.
I think, I think what would end up happening in situations where it was a contentious application, or we needed more information, we would probably end up just tabling it and just moving it to the next hearing. I think that's the path forward.
Right, yeah, because there's, I mean, there's a lot of cases that come before us that are, I mean, it's slam dunk, you know, just boom, take it and run.
I think it's a good question, though.
Yeah, the Commission always has the right to table and ask for more information and/or resolution of conflicts.
Right, okay.
Right, so the Commission is not limited to one hearing. They could have more than one.
Right.
But it's a nice tool to have in the bag.
Yeah.
I have a, I have a question, Ms. Perkins. Is there anything in here, your misedited application procedure, that doesn't relate to the subjects that you've kind of, I guess, two or three subjects that you're talking about?
No, we limited it. We wanted to make this simple and straightforward. There's a lot of sections of the code that I would love to make some changes to.
Well, we appreciate your hard work on it. I know that Commissioner Luke's has been vying for this for, I think, since I was in my twenties, but...
That was fifteen years ago.
So, and there's been plenty of people that could have gotten it done, and you have, so we're very appreciative of that, so.
Mr. Luke's?
I second that.
Will you do us the pleasure?
Oh, I will do the pleasure. At long last, I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1313, which is case number PZ 2013-21, right?
Correct. And do we have a second?
I will second that.
Commissioner Lucero, seconds. Is there any further discussion from the Commission? Having heard none, roll call, vote please.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Luke's?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Awesome. Okay, we're gonna move on to our final discussion tonight, it looks like. Case PZ 2013-23, which was on the original of F, and now I believe it's G. Correct. And that's an ordinance number 13-17, adding as permitted principal uses to the town to allow principal personal uses for professional office or service, special retail establishments, and other commercial uses that are compatible and complementary in scale and appearance with the residential environment, and provide business services and office facilities to residents of the neighborhood. Ms. Perkins.
Okay, so some of that language that you just read is how the current code reads as far as being compatible with the existing neighborhood. It's kind of a catch-all phrase that he read at the very, very end.
That can invite capricious and arbitrary.
Well, maybe.
Because who is to say compatible?
But aren't those, aren't those uses already allowed in an R14?
They're allowed as far...
For conditional use.
With a conditional use.
By conditional use. So you have to apply for a conditional use permit. When we discussed this at the last hearing, we discussed about allowing certain uses and not allowing other uses based on hours of operation. Like, one of my recommendations was not to allow restaurants as a permitted use, just because they generally, the hours go later, and same with bars, and some, and restaurants require quite a bit of parking. And there was some discussion about how some of these other specialty retail establishments such as meat and fish markets, bakeries, things like that could actually go longer, past certain hours. So I made a couple code changes based on our discussion the last time. If you'll look on page 18, which is the last page, it's, it's under conditional uses. I'm saying that specialty establishments that operate outside the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. and are deemed not compatible and complementary in scale and appearance with the residential environment by the code administrator. So I think that that somewhat addresses the question that Commissioner Garcia just brought up, as far as how do we determine what's compatible and what's not? And then, same with the permitted principal uses, again, putting those hours in. The parking was one of the things that I was thinking, well, maybe the code administrator may have to weigh in on. And there may be some other instances where whatever's being proposed just really doesn't work in a residential neighborhood, and so you'd...
Isn't it better just to leave it the way it is with the conditional use? That way...
You know, there's a lot of R14-zoned property in the downtown area with the primary use of the property being a business, not residential. And I don't know how many of those properties have been grandfathered in, how many of them may have been home occupations that have evolved over time. But it's, from what I have seen since I've been here, is there is an awful lot of uses that have either been grandfathered in or somehow exist. And it's like what we were talking about earlier. They're, they're legal non-conforming uses. So if, if a building sits empty and that use isn't used for like six months, you're losing that right to use that building as a business. So now you're gonna have to come before the Planning and Zoning Commission and ask for a conditional use permit. And a lot of these properties are in the historical overlay zone. And a part of the intent of that zone is to protect and preserve the downtown mixed-use uses. And the R4 also says that the intent is to allow for mixed use. But the only thing that's allowed by right or as a permitted use is residential. So I think, and I'm recommending as staff, that we allow a little bit more flexibility in the R14 zone to allow for mixed use, since that is stated under the intent and purpose. Mixed use is encouraged in the R14 zone.
Can I ask you, why not other residential zones?
Well, there's R4, there's R6.
Right.
Most of the residential zones are based on the number of units that are allowed per acre. And then home occupations are usually allowed as accessory use, not as a permitted use, mainly because you have to have a residence to have a home occupation. You can't really have a home occupation unless you have a residential use. So that's...
So why not, why not allow some of these uses too as a permitted use in, let's say, R4 or R6?
We could do that. I just noticed that the R14 in particular seemed to have a lot of principal uses that were not residential, that were being grandfathered in.
Don't we have a new zone also, R8, or something like that?
I don't remember an R8. We have a lot of zones, though.
I know. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I mean, that might be something that you might take a look at, if it would make sense.
Right, I need to finish my use index. I started it, and it goes on and on and on and on. So I'll get that to you, hopefully, one of these days soon.
Any other questions from the Commission?
I, for one, I think this is a great idea because it adds to the character of town, the diversity, and, and I think having businesses where you live is the whole way of doing things. And if we cut down on traffic, it will, it's just, it makes a lot of sense in all aspects.
So by passing this, am I getting, reading this right? We're saying all these uses are permitted in the R14. So if somebody decides to go put a restaurant in this neighborhood, R14 neighborhood, they just, it's, it's approved because it's allowed. And keeping it the way it is with a conditional use, then there, there's feedback from the, from the neighborhood, there's feedback from anybody that objects to it.
If you actually look at the code, the proposed code, which is on pages 16, 17, and 18, if you look under 16.16.120.2, permitted principal uses, you have the following uses shall be permitted in the R14 zone. So we have residential, we have personal service retail establishments, professional office and or service, specialty retail establishments, and other commercial uses that are compatible and complementary in scale with the residential neighborhood. I summarized that, I didn't go into a lot of detail. Then you have permitted accessory uses, which includes a home occupation, because that's normally what home occupations are. That's just a minor change. And then I didn't change the code as far as the storage of no more than a total of one operational sports trailer, recreational vehicle, motorhome trailer, camper, whatever. And then other uses that are clearly accessory to the primary use of the property. Conditional uses, if you want to have a bed and breakfast, that still is only allowed by conditional use permit. And that goes the same for convenience or a small grocery store, or eating or drinking establishment.
Right.
So your restaurant would still be by conditional use permit.
Right, okay.
Okay. Any other Commissioners want to speak on this? Having heard none, do we have a motion on the floor?
I make a motion that case number 2013-23, with findings of fact and recommendations of staff, be approved to council?
Okay, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Luke's. Is there any more discussion from the Commission? Having heard none, roll call, vote please.
Okay, Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Luke's?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
The motion passes six to zero.
Okay, move on to our next item, matters from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Are there any matters that any Commissioner would like to bring up this time?
I just have one, which, what I would like, on the agenda, on the case numbers, if you would reflect if they're preliminary or final, just to be more transparent to public when we advertise.
Yeah, we used to do that.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from the Commission?
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Luke's, second.
Second.
All the favors satisfied by I.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.